Alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the name of the republic, the Constitution, our Constitution, under God, and in this world, for liberty and justice for all.
Me standing in one of these slots. Okay, so today, to start our meeting, we're going to start with a budget presentation. I'm going to turn it over to our CEO, Matt, Matt Ballman.
Thanks, Julie. Good evening, everybody. So tonight is our budget presentation, as Julie said. So this is our proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The board approved this proposed budget last month, so and we're looking forward to our annual vote on Tuesday, April fourth, here at the library, from nine thirty AM to eight thirty A, eight thirty PM, excuse me. So we'll get started. So here at the Hop Up Public Library, we feel as though we're inspiring our community to learn, grow, and connect. We're here basically every hour of every day, we're working to do that. So we do our resources in person, obviously, here at thirteen seventy-three vets, and we're available online on those hours that we're not here. So we view it as a privilege that we get to do this work every day, to provide public library service to our community, and we believe we're vital. And when we look at some of the indicators of that, on Facebook, we have a four point seven out of five rating, which I think is pretty good. And some of the quotes we have is that we are very nice, and the staff is so friendly and helpful. That was on Google, someone let us know that, so we're very proud of those comments that we get in here. Let's see, so this year, we had over six thousand three hundred and fifty people who had a library card with us, that's almost, that's fifty-nine percent of our community has a library card. We helped over sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-five people came through the doors here at the library, and they asked just shy of seventeen thousand questions of our staff. So, and we were open for six thousand, I'm sorry, three thousand, six hundred and ninety-two hours in the last year, and we're planning to be open that amount of hours next year as well. We had over ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty people use our technology, log on to our computers. But we also check out what we call the library of things. So these are various pieces of equipment that someone might be a little bit like, want to try something out before they buy. Also, it might be something that's maybe a limited use for them, but something that we can purchase that you can use occasionally. One of the more popular ones right now is you can borrow from us one of those lawn signs that says happy birthday. Right? You only have a birthday once a year, Ralph. Yeah, so now you can borrow it from us, put it out there, and you can celebrate your own birthday. We have another one that says congratulations, so you can get that sign. I think we also have an inflatable birthday cake, is that right, Krista? Yes, so you can get the inflatable birthday cake too. Yeah, so everything you need to have a nice party for your family, borrow from the library, you know, you don't need it all the time. So it's one of those things that we can help you do. I know I'm making light of it, but really, it helps people in those needs. So you want to have, you know, that kind of party situation, want to have a better time with your family. We're hoping and helping to make those connections better and stronger. That's what we think we're here to do. Alright, so we are part of a cooperative in New York, on Long Island, called the Suffolk Cooperative Library System. And collectively, we we pool our money together to buy digital content, right? So we put in money to buy eBooks, audiobooks, magazines, embarrassed things like that, and a lot of people use it through the Libby app or Overdrive, which is sunsetting. But Libby is that app. We're almost at a million items that we've bought collectively. So we're at nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred assets that we own through that product. And last year, they were used over seventy thousand times by our community. Right, which is amazing, right, that people really like to access that content digitally. So we think it's a great resource that we're able to offer so many titles, and that so many people get to use it. And of course, we're, you're able to do that any hour, right? Our library catalog is online, you can do, you can do that kind of requesting print material, regular material, or download material. If you can't sleep at night, feel free to get a book, and that'll put you right to bed, depends on what you get. So we added just shy of two hundred thousand items to our collections, that includes those digital items that we were able to purchase. And we loaned out just shy of a hundred and seventy thousand items, again, including those digital items. So about a little more than half was physical items, and then the rest was the digital ones that we're able to lend out to people. Alright, there we go. So we also offer free online tutoring. It's called Homework Help. This is a resource that allows really any level of student to be able to access tutoring. I think it's from three PM to eight PM, or maybe it's actually to ten right now. And you can get help with math, science, language arts, foreign languages. If you were writing a resume, you can upload it to them, and they'll give you tips about that. College preparation essays, any kind of work that you're trying to do, even through kind of that younger undergrad level, they can help you out with it. It's probably the best kept secret that we have. We tell people about it all the time, and when you tell a parent about it, their eyes light up. They're like, really? They can help with? Fill in the blank, the answer is yes, they can help with that, they can help with term papers, research projects, they can really offer a lot of great resources there. So it's a great thing to tell people that you can access here at the library. We do our best to, but it never seems like it's enough. Also, we have a great resource, the Suffolk County Historic Newspapers, and we're adding thousands of pages to this per year. I just saw a statistic recently, because the vendor is changing, who hosts this project? It's part of the New York State Historic Newspaper Project. They're getting close to a million pages of scanned content that's out there. And we're just working together within the town of Islip to add another about thirty thousand pages, mostly of Suffolk life, we're going to add to it, and a little bit of a run of the Suffolk County news, the last three years of the Suffolk County news. So it's an amazing database, you go in there, and if you do genealogy work, or you want to, you know, research a home or some other, you want to look at old ads from the sixties of what was in Suffolk life or a business, you can just do a keyword search, and it'll find it from all those old newspapers. So it's one of those things where it's content that, you know, everyone says it's on the web, it's on the, well, this stuff is not yet on there, and we're working to try to help get it on there, so it becomes more accessible to more people. And the other problem is that that print, it's falling apart, right? That's not in a media that's going to last forever. So a lot of times what we have to do is pay to film it first, and then the film gets scanned. That's typically how it gets done, so, and we're very proud of that. Another big service that we provide are museum passes, right? Trying to expand our cultural offerings here, and this is a very popular service that we have. And we manage these each year, we change the mix up. So last year, you could go, well, you can't go to the Fire and Lighthouse right now, because of damage in that storm. But you can go to the museum, out to the Parish Art Museum, Vanderbilt, the Long Island Science Center, various children's museums. We all, also the Empire Pass, which is incredibly popular, which lets you park at any of the state parks for free. And so you can come in and reserve these. Some of them now, you actually get the pass at home, you don't even have to come into the library. You can just print out the pass at home and take it to the various museums. Not all of them work that way, but more and more are, because it's just much more convenient. So then you get your pass, go there, and sometimes it's for two people, four people, six people, it depends. So sometimes it's like two adults and four kids, sometimes it's two, two adults and two kids. Each museum sets their limits, but it's still a great deal, because obviously you're getting some people through the door for free. So this is the staff, some of the staff here, we're getting our I don't know why it's not working, it doesn't work on the screen. We're, this is Assemblyman Fitzpatrick, and Krista here, who's back there operating, is holding the Sustainable Library Certification Program Award. So this was a very proud day for us when we finished that process through the Sustainable Libraries Initiative, which said that we, the investments that we're making here are being done in a way that is environmentally sound, socially equitable, and environmentally, you know, we're doing the right thing by the environment. So that was a big day for us, and the Assemblyman Fitzpatrick was good enough to come and celebrate with us. So, as we said at the top, it's a great privilege and a vital service. Five stars or more, if I could, that's a good, I like that one. I love this library and the staff is great, lots of activity for the kids, live music is great. So really try our best to make sure that our guests are happy, and that they're having a good time when they're here. And again, we're very happy to offer what we can. So let's talk about what we're talking about for next year. Essentially, we're looking to continue the strong program of offering the amount of materials, the amount of in-person events that we do. We do offer some things now in a hybrid way, or sometimes completely virtual, depending on the appropriateness of it. And that takes money to do that, right, to buy the books, to provide those, the e-content. So that line is the materials and services. Operations tends to be what it says, the general stuff it takes to run what we're doing. The internet access, running the various supplies we need, the equipment maintenance, personnel is the largest part of our expenditures. That budget includes a two percent salary increase for all staff, except for two members of staff who are thinking about promoting. We have some long-term staff members here who are deserving of that, and so we're, that, the budget includes that. And also includes health insurance, which is going up drastically with the differences in COVID and the rest. I think it's projected between ten and fourteen percent. So we have covered that, and it keeps us open the hours that we are to staff the library for the seventy-one hours a week that we're open each week. Professional services, we've kept as low as possible for our different accounting, attorney, memberships, and our treasurer, and then our facility. So our rent goes up two point seven five percent this year, so we have to cover those costs. Thankfully, our electricity is fixed in our lease, so we don't have to worry about the fluctuations of that market. And that also includes the heat, so we don't have to worry about as well, that that number stayed the same. So while some other places are going through a lot of fluctuations with supply costs and all the rest, ours is staying fixed. We do have something to do with property tax that does continue to go up, and that's covered in here as well. So how are we going to pay for that? We've increased our other revenue through changes in our anticipated income through interest. We're obviously getting more interest income than we had before. We're also getting more in pilot money, which is payment in lieu of taxes. These are agreements that are written by the Suffolk County Industrial Association and the Islip, the town of Islip Industrial Development Association. These are programs out there that help businesses who are either refinancing their operations or wanting to come into the town of Islip to do business. They negotiate deals that instead of paying the normal tax rate that other businesses do, they pay a discounted version, and then it kind of ramps back up to the full rate over some period of time. So those taxing districts get monies from there. So while we have the normal tax appropriation, the pilot money is kind of a different revenue stream. So we're anticipating to get around a hundred sixty-five, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in pilot money next, over this next year. So that's good for, means that, you know, Islip is doing good work, and they're getting businesses to come in, which is great, which usually means more jobs, and helping the tax base overall. So we're always good, I think it's good to see more pilot money. And then the rest of the balance is the tax appropriation. Well, what about the folks that live there? What are they going to have to pay? So so the estimated tax rate is going to go up ten cents. From right now, it's one point zero one cents to one point one one cents. And basically, the math was very easy this year, and it's a ten cents thing to do the math across. So we give an example of different home assessments and what that increase would be. So the yearly increase is there ranging from thirty to ninety dollars over what's paid right now. So we're really hopeful that we can continue to serve you. It's definitely our priority to make sure that the community that uses this library is happy with it, and all that actually pay for it, even if you're not using it, that you're happy with your library. We hope that everyone comes in and makes the most of their library, either through getting a card or coming in and making, making the most of the services that they're investing in. And the vote is on April fourth, twenty twenty-three. As I said, it's from nine thirty AM to eight thirty PM. If you're unable to come to the vote, it's still possible to get an absentee ballot. They're available, the applications are available up at the guest services desk up until April third. You can get the ballot if you can't be there on the fourth. I think the mailing deadline is tomorrow. So if you wanted to ballot mail to you, you can fill out the application, and it should get to you in time in order to get it back to us. As long as we receive the absentee ballot by five PM on April fourth, it'll be counted. So there's that. What else about that? And the vote will be over in classroom C, so this is A B. On the other side of the library, by the children's room, is where the vote will actually be held. So that's the budget presentation, Julie.
Thank you very much, Matt, I appreciate it. Um, tonight, we're also going to have our trustee candidate forum, as we do have trustees running for, I guess, election or reelection. Unfortunately, Steve can't be here today, so we're going to is we're going to suspend the meeting?
I don't know if you want to say if there's any questions?
Are there any questions about the budget proposal or?
Thank you for welcoming me in, I'm a longtime resident. Recently, I've suddenly discovered some of the things you've had here, I've been with, you see a couple of the speaking events. And since I retired, I've got a little more time for things like this. I have to tell you, is this typical that there's only one person?
You increased it from last month, a hundred percent.
That's good, well, and before I say anything else, you first, I know you do this as a volunteer thing.
Yes, they do.
You know, there's probably affect this job in some ways, but just as a resident, and I'm always, I'm always grateful that people like you step up and do this on a daily time for the benefit of the community, so I just need to see if this is.
Oh, don't worry, we're going to get your name and number.
Very impressive presentation. So one thing we've jumped out with at the beginning, it's a fifty-nine percent of public visits in the library. But that's, wow, that's, now, is that, how does that compare to other communities of a similar size, you know?
We tend to be on the high side, actually. Yeah, this is a community that really loves their library. A lot of times that rate tends to hover a little closer to fifty, if not a little bit below. So it's down for us a little bit, we've been higher. COVID took a little of the steam out of a lot of people. And so as I've talked to the board over the last year or so, is while our numbers are increasing in use, it's the, it's so slow, it's like, you know, just shy of a percent this month, just a little over a one percent the next month, it's just really slow coming. People are coming back, we are getting busier, and people are getting more cards, but it's, it's, it's definitely taking its time.
I can tell you that, that was, the things you just discussed, and the things that's on the, in the presentation. Do you have any idea what percentage of that group of fifty-nine percent represents, whatever, five or six thousand? Do you have any idea what percentage of that group comes in here at least once during the year?
I don't often, no, I don't have an answer to that question, that's a good, it's a good question. Yeah, typically, we're looking, the cards that we have can expire over three years, that we register someone, and the card's good for three years. Like I said, though, like half the checkouts that we had are virtual, right? So there's a lot of people who have a card, and they don't necessarily walk into the facility. But they know, we know they're using it, right? So, sure, it counts, but I'm saying to get then that count of someone who comes in here.
I didn't, I didn't mean that, what percentage of that group uses the library in some way?
Yeah.
Takes advantage of all of them, you have to offer that.
Right, right. Yeah.
The other thing I was going to ask is with the budget, how does our budget, your budget, compared to other within libraries in similar-sized communities, both the expenses and the expectations?
We're unique, of course, because we're paying a rent. That's not something that a lot of other libraries have to contend with, they own their buildings or own their facilities. I'm just answering these questions, that's okay, Julie. The other thing I did not mention is that we are not piercing the tax cap this year, you know, we're, we're subject to that. The board chose to keep it at the amount that's allowable under the tax cap, which a lot of my colleagues are doing as well. So I would say that, you know, many of us are being mindful of that and trying to make sure that we're being as as, I don't, I don't know what the correct, right word is, but I mean, we're definitely put the taxpayer first in thinking about what we're asking them to support here.
So if you looked at the budget of communities on, certain Suffolk counties that have around the same population, just roughly, the budget amount would be about the same?
It should be, yeah.
Okay, any questions on the board? Nope. Nope. Uh, so now I can suspend the regular meeting for a moment, you have the call, also order a public hearing.
So you just got a motion to do that.
Okay, I need a, I need a motion to suspend the meeting, right, don't need. John, second it, yeah? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so now, we're going to talk about this proposed resolution for the board, the public library to accept absentee board members to serve to Zoom into meetings that we're trying to do?
Right, yeah.
So, you know, as we have had, or, you know, board is only small, it's only five of us. So to have form, we need at least three, and sometimes, you know, we're all pulled in different directions. But, but if we can, if we can accept this proposal to allow people to zoom into the meetings, we could, we could have enough participants, even though we have to have a physical form three, we, we we can have more input from the, from the board members who can't physically attend the meeting. So I'd like to bring our proposal to accept that.
So I think what we have to do first is have a hearing.
Okay.
Hearing here, right, so, thank, I think, do you mind if I?
No, absolutely.
Okay, great, so I think what the order of operations is, and we don't often do a hearing. And Julian is our vice president stepping in for Steve tonight, so thank you for that. As we put out a notice in last week's paper, that basically said that the stipulations of this change to section, it's came in as of the state passed a law that allowed us under chapter fifty-six, the laws of twenty twenty-two, to adjust to, to pass a local resolution that allows you to come up with procedures to do exactly what you said, which is to allow participation by members in their meetings via video conference. And the old way was that you would have to publish the address of where that person was participating. So if one of you were, say, on vacation in Florida and want to participate in it, you'd have to put your hotel address. And someone would be able to knock on your door and come in and watch you attend the meeting. That's how the law was written. Now, what they said is there's extraordinary circumstances where someone might having be caring for somebody. And we have this technology, why are we being so kind of uptight about it in a way, right? So they passed this law and allowed you, but you're exactly right, you have to still have a physical form. And I heard a lady from the Open Meetings Division, or whatever it is, from New York State, say, someone said, well, what about if there was a snowstorm? Could, could we all still have the meeting? And they were like, well, that's not really nice, because it's who goes first, you know, because you still have to have the physical form. So it's like, well, I'll go first, you know, not it, so I get to stay home, and you all have. So she goes, if it's hard for the public to attend the meeting, right? You shouldn't have a meeting, right, right? You should, you should, you should postpone it, or, or wait till you can get everyone to the meeting space. Again, the idea is that the community participates in the business of government. And it's not just making it convenient for the, for the member. While you're right, sir, acknowledging that these are all volunteers, right? There is a commitment, though, to making sure that our proceedings are as open as possible. So what does this do is the way that they wrote this is that you had to have a hearing about it. And that's what, that's what's happening right now. And so really, we're opening it to any kind of testimony that people want to say about this idea that you can pass a procedure to allow the members to participate in this matter in extraordinary circumstances. And you do have a draft of those procedures, and depending on the results of the hearing, you can close the hearing tonight, if you so choose. And then, under your due business, when you get back in your regular meeting, then adopt that resolution, and even possibly adopt the procedures as, as I drafted.
Okay.
And essentially, in those procedures, which is really the crux, that, you know, the crux of this, is it says, you need to have some extraordinary reasons to do this, right? That you're going to have a physical form, you're, you're not going to allow people just to do it because they don't want to drive down here. You know, you're going to have, you're going to have to be given a fairly solid reason to allow someone to participate that way. And it still requires that, that the physical meeting happening here at your designated meeting space. So that's really the, the, there's a lot of language in that procedure that really is just talking about some extraordinary circumstances and what they're defined as.
And they do a nice job defining that to make it, you know, that is not unclear to anybody.
That's right.
It's quite clear.
Right. So I would say, probably, Julian, the best thing would be to ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak towards it. Anybody you'd like to speak towards this, this proposal?
Well, since I'm here. So he says the whole Zoom thing is pros and cons, people staying at home, they're paying attention, not even that much. But presumably, I think more people involved have, these, this is being recorded, video, videotaped, and then it's available online, but it's not live.
It's live streaming. No, it is.
Oh, it is live streaming.
Yes, and if you like, right now, this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube. So the camera is up there, and it's, and that, the proceedings were mic'd, and that's going out to YouTube. But that's a one-way platform.
Somebody watching, you can't.
Cannot comment. And that's exactly the point, Sue, that you brought up, is if, let's say that John, that we passed all this, and John asked that the meeting, that he had to, he asked to participate that way, and the board agreed, we would have to host the meeting on Zoom or some other platform that would allow the, the public to ask questions and be able to see that. It would have to be an interactive platform instead of a streaming platform, exactly right.
I think anything you could do to get more engagement, that's why my first comment, I was surprised there's only one member of the public here, and he said, that's one more than last time. And I know inviting the general public in, it's a double act, so you can get all kinds of. But at the same time, I was very impressed with what, with your presentation. And I'm a taxpayer, and I learned some more things about what the library has offered. And I think if you had, you know, if you had fifty people here, forty-eight of them, it would probably be exactly the way I did, right? In running it in a very viscerally responsible way and don't go for it. So anything you could do to encourage more people to be aware of what you're doing, I think that's great. And it's, in my opinion, without allowing, it would really be just one or two more members. And it's, in my opinion, without allowing, it would really be just one or two board members, because you said. But then there would still be a physical meeting, but there may be one or two board members on a screen. And everybody else is here and the general public is coming in. I would think that's a good idea.
I will, I will tell you that during COVID, during the worst part of COVID, when the library was closed, and we were just doing everything virtually. The physical library was closed, it was still operational, um, but the board. I guess through circumstance, New York State allowed us to have the.
That's right.
Hold board meetings via Zoom, and we we did continue to hold board meetings that way because. Nobody wanted to be around each other because we all were worried about COVID, so. And, uh, our usual trick of getting people in here is give away awards. Yeah. Okay, so no further questions?
I think this is over.
I think it's over too, but. So, uh, with all discussions set aside, now we will, uh, can resume the meeting?
So if we'd like to close the.
Yeah, we'll close the hearing. Motion to close? I close this meet. Okay, so close the meeting, we're gonna resume our regular meeting, and we'll start with the approval of, uh. The minutes from the meeting last month.
Do you need a motion for this, right, to pass the hearing?
It'll be on our new business.
Oh, any questions about last month's minutes?
No. Well written.
Yes. Uh, the motion to accept the minutes? Second? All in favor? Okay, so we were through the minutes, it's time for the treasures report.
Okay. Uh, there were no changes to what I shared, uh, in your packet. Um, John came in and reviewed them, John, did you have anything to say? Um, finally, some of the, uh, as I reported last month, you know. That we had received the tax receipts kind of after the reports were run, so I'm sure it was nice for you to see them actually on the balance sheet that there. It really did come in and seeing now, uh, some increases in the, uh, interest as well. Uh, now that we have those, those amounts in there. Um, one thing that, uh, slipped past my, uh, purview, unfortunately. For the warrant was checks for our poll workers for April fourth. So what'll happen is, um, we'll cut those checks, um. After this all gets cleared out before next Tuesday. I'll ask someone to come in and just sign those, maybe John, if you're gonna be here that day.
Sure.
And, um. And then, um, I can sign them too, and then they'll be on next month's warrant. Uh, typically, we hand out those checks to the poll workers after the, the night of the election, because obviously they work for us, right?
Yeah.
And you've already approved the rates for them and all the rest, it's just the actual cutting of the checks. Uh, that's the only thing I have to add.
I just have one. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, by all means.
I just wanted to understand this accounts payable auditors. Like, we owe the auditor like eighty-nine thousand dollars, is that what it means? Because it keeps on showing every month, but I wanted to ask.
Which report are you looking at?
I'm looking at the balance sheet, the liabilities and equities. Uh, four, four thousand account, chart of account. Now page number is seventeen.
This report here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The, uh, chart of account number four thousand.
Mm-hmm.
It's accounts payable auditor, right?
Okay.
So it's like eighty-nine thousand, five forty-nine, so it's like carry forward, carry forward, that we have to pay to the auditors or?
No, no. No, I think he put that there as a line for his work. I don't think it's anything, it's not a payment or something that they're owed.
Really? Because it's a payable, so I'm not sure what.
Yes.
Which is account activity. It's February twenty-second through March eighth. At the bottom, it says twenty twenty-three year of the. Uh, totals year of date. And, uh, it says we had an interest, we paid a hundred fifteen dollars in interest in twenty twenty-three. I wasn't thinking we're paying interest on it.
It was because we, uh, we lost a payment. Uh, well, a payment was sent and never received. So the mails let us down. Unfortunately, and so last month, we, we finally cut the check to catch up with it. We were waiting for that check to arrive, it never did. We stopped payment on that check and then we, we got it, so we got a little caught there, unfortunately. Uh, I can check.
And I, I, I know I've asked this question, but I'm. Sure, I have no idea what the answer is. Are we, is this a cash bank credit? What's the, uh?
Uh, no, it's not. It's, uh, points, you get points for the card. And we tend to get like, uh, gift cards and things for, um. Like our programs and stuff where we do like our bingo night or something like that.
You know what the percentage is?
I don't know.
Just as an aside. Cap one. Uh, it's two percent.
Okay.
And you can do all that stuff, you can get, get cards, you can get money, you can, you can pay bills for that, you can, you can do anything. So, um, it's not, it doesn't limit, but I don't, when we searched ours, we couldn't find a better one than that.
Okay. That's enough, thank you, Rob.
And to be honest with you, we started paying more bills on the credit card. So the vendors that would accept it, we just pay them. And it made a big difference, it's huge.
Are you finding any vendors that are having a surcharge on them, on that? Because I noticed like a lot of retailers now. In the stores, or say, there's this, especially restaurants, the surcharge of four percent or something like that. You pay with a credit card or discount for cash.
It, it is the exception, not the rule. I, I resisted for a while, thinking that was gonna be the, the common response, and it was exactly the exact opposite. And, um. I got all my, my three big vendors, which we spent millions of dollars a year with. None of them charged the surcharge. It's huge. So you just start looking at all the things you spend money on, you never know, they may say, yeah, it's no problem, that you get a two percent discount by paying another credit.
Well, they like it, the money's in the bank.
In some states, it's illegal if you are on the invoice, if you put the surcharge, then it's not legal, you have to have. Not put, but the, the gas company.
Yeah.
So you never know what is.
I think for us is, um, I think we'd wanna shore up our policy about that. Like our payment policy, because, um. I wouldn't want there to be any kind of misunderstanding between the auditor and like, why are we shifting to the credit card payments instead of going through a warrant system? Essentially, you'd be making the credit card almost like.
Automatic payment.
Right, but why could, where could we create a warrant?
No, you could, I'm just saying that for an oversight standpoint. You, you want the ability for the board to be able to approve as many charges as possible. Right? So if they're now already paid on a credit card, how do you go back and unwind that?
Yeah, it, but. That I.
So what you're saying is after the fact.
You approve the warrant.
Then you can pay.
Yeah, I would, that's the only way I could see it still.
Right, so there could be something where it's like, like now in the warrant says ACHs and then check numbers. You could have to be paid via credit card, and then it could go through, or. You know, we'd have to talk about that with him, how he'd like to see that. But I think certainly could be a mechanism to do it.
It's what, personally, I mean, you're, for sure.
Yeah, thanks, Rob.
Okay. Need a motion. Motion to, uh. All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, uh, thank you, that's the treasures report. Any correspondence?
Uh, there was none.
Uh, chief executive offers report, alright.
So unfortunately, Donna, uh, was not able to join us tonight. So, which is too bad. But, um, she was really gonna talk to you about the flea. Uh, which is our big event coming up, um, in April. So I asked Krista, who was helping her with that, to just give me some statistics about it. So, um, this is gonna be on Earth Day, uh, this is April twenty-second. And, um, from ten to two, I believe. And again, this is going to be a community-wide yard sale. And a whole bunch of other stuff too. And the yard sale's happening in the parking lot right out here, and then there's gonna be other activities in the front of the building. So to date, we have sixty-four people have registered for spots out here. That's thirty-nine people who are gonna sell yard sale items. Five antiques and collectibles, one clothing and accessories, thirteen crafts and handmade items. Two food, two jewelry, and two other. That's what we're gonna have here so far.
What's the number of stalls we got?
I feel like the number was eighty. We're close, we're real close. I think we wanted to have this kind of sewn up by the end of this month, but it will probably extend it, obviously, until. We, we get there, because we wanna start to assign people where they're gonna go. Uh, so, what to expect? We have a variety of vendors from the community. Um, I just mentioned that, there's gonna be a table, a library table promoting our upcoming events. So we're definitely gonna be promoting summer reading, uh, we'll be promoting, um. And summer reading, we're gonna have a kickoff party this year, which we haven't had in a few years, it's actually gonna be a Monday night. So school ends on Friday, Monday is gonna be the kickoff party. Um, and we vetted that on the Facebook Moms Group to see if they liked that idea. And they loved it because it avoids graduation and prom and all that, and it tends to be more for the little ones. So we're gonna have a real big kickoff on, uh, the Monday. And we'll promote the summer concert series as well, so we'll definitely get people excited about the summer. Uh, the friends will have their table, uh, as well. We're gonna have, uh, music with the DJ, crafts for kids. And so far, we have, uh, two food trucks, Island Empanada. And Roxy's Ice Cream Truck will be here. There'll be paper shredding from ten to one and shed the meds from ten to two. So we're advertising in all our, uh, methods newsletter. Uh, we're gonna put bookmarks in. Where they're going, and now they're on the backside of the boat, um, bookmark. Uh, we have flyers up, our e-news, we've gone to the public schools, we've been on Facebook, the Moms Group. Uh, we're in Newsday, and we're in the Hop Hug Smithtown Macaroni Kid, which is kind of an upcoming activities type of place.
Oh, nice.
So that's where we've been advertising the attendance for that day.
Matt, who's the, uh, shed the meds coordinator with?
Typically, that's the sheriff's office, I believe, or, or the police. Yeah, I think they typically love that.
So many things to say.
Yeah. You're out of mine. That's April twenty-second. Yeah, uh, ten AM to two PM.
Are we allowing home cook or stands? Like a table for home cook, or does it have to be a truck from a vendor? We're not restricting anything, right? I'm not here also. Um, but I would love to.
We're not making any claims to.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're working with, uh, we're bringing in food trucks. And they're gonna provide us insurance and all of that.
Okay.
Uh, but they're the only vendors that we're doing that with. Everyone else, it's home-based and. We're not. Yes, we're not claiming any kind of, uh, warranty or anything out there, that's. We're not involved with any transaction, you know, so you break it, you, but whatever you wanna deal with out there is on you. I keep pointing to you, sir, but I'm really pointing. But, um. So we're just staying, we're gonna stay out of that.
That's good.
Yeah, so if Department of Health shows up and shows up to someone's car and says, what are you ladling, ladling out of this pot? That's not it. It's a free spot, you know.
And shredding is a great service, so.
That's okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, always popular.
Yeah.
Yeah, we get way too much mail. So, um, great, uh.
So, if that was Donna, the chief executive?
That's right.
Any committee, committee reports?
Well, I had a few more things. That's okay, that's alright. So, uh, let's see, uh, just a reminder about the, um. Uh, sexual harassment awareness training, um, that's online at, uh, Noble Floor. So if, uh, I know some of you take care of that other places, if you get a certificate, I can, you know, make that done for you.
Do you know that I just? I'm, I, I get to take care of someplace else.
Yeah, I know.
I just, I, they do it to my conversion. Figured out how to sign in, there was some glitch in my name and I couldn't sign in. I've always spent like five hours and I'm, I'm not even nearly caught up this. It's actually a very good service, as it turns out, but I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, I was up in, uh, I made it to Albany that after our meeting, uh, last month, uh, in all the snow. Uh, it was a bit of a white knuckler, but I got up there. And, uh, got a chance to see some of our representatives, including Senator, uh, Martinez and Assemblyman Fitzpatrick for Advocacy Day. Uh, sponsored by the New York Library Association. Um, you know, as you can see, and basically, uh, not due to our efforts, but, uh, maybe. Uh, we had an update from Kevin Verbussy that. Things are looking fairly good for libraries while the governor's budget wasn't everything we hoped for. Um, the Assemblyman and the Senate are trying to restore some of those gains. So we have not heard the latest and the greatest, obviously, there's still time on the calendar, uh, before the budget is considered late. Which is April first. Um, so hopefully, they'll be coming to some conclusion soon and we'll know exactly what we're aiming to get. Again, just a reminder that the budget. While important, is really indirect to this library. We get very little state money. Uh, last year, I think we got somewhere along the lines, if I can look in here, it's, I think we budgeted. Yeah, three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars in state funding, um, but. The biggest number we can get is from construction aid. Uh, when we refit the space, we got, um, um, in the magnitude of two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's really the big number we get, and that's why we go advocate. But who really gets the money is the separate cooperative library system. So if we advocate for more money for them. We pay less in our member support to get to, to do the collective work that we get to do here in something. And so that's the big reason why I go up there. And I go up there in case we ever had a need, right? If we go up there and we need a piece of legislation, or there's something that we're trying to get done. It would be much better to have a good relationship with them than that, that you're trying to get introduced for the first time. So, um, actually, my local, uh, senator from where I live is Dean Murray. And, uh, he's actually the ranking minority member on the, the Senate Libraries Committee. And he is a great fan of libraries, so it was really just such a pleasure to talk to him. And he was telling us our speaking, you know, our, our bullet points were coming right at his mouth, which is always wonderful.
Cool.
So it was good, good to, to talk to those folks. Alright. Um, I don't know if you saw this about, uh, the town comprehensive plan. Um, Angie Carpenter, in her, uh, State of the Town address on March first. Said that she wants to do a new town comprehensive plan, the last one was done in nineteen seventy-seven. So she felt it was time to, to do a new one. Uh, so she's putting a group together, I would assume, to do this work. I think libraries should be at the table.
Agreed.
So I, uh, reached out to Councilman O'Connor and said, hey. What does it take? Who's putting the team together? You know, what's involved? I have not heard back from him. I sent that request last week, so, um, I'll follow up with his office with a phone call soon and see what the story is. But, um. We'll see what happens. I, I reached out to my colleagues here in town of Islip and, uh. They're all like, eh, I'm busy, I don't have time, so. It could be me, and that's fine, uh, I think someone should be there, though, if we're able to. Um, I think all too often, libraries are thought of as an afterthought, and I think we have a lot to offer the town, um. At the front, I think we can be, you know, a good force for, for this community and help in a lot of ways. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, the friends met on the twenty-first of March, um. It was while I was away, so I didn't get a chance to attend, Catherine was there in my stead. And, uh, they're plugging along and, and doing good stuff, so, uh, as always. Um, thanks, John, for the getting back to me about the key performance indicators. Did not have time to come up with something for tonight, but I'll certainly have something for the next meeting for our discussion.
Any big questions coming out of that dialogue we had met?
I don't think so. Yeah, I think uh I I I get it, I think I know where we're heading and. Yeah, I think it'll be good.
Awesome.
Uh, at the end of April is uh National Library Week, that's uh April twenty-third to the twenty-ninth. So it's, there's more to the story, is this year's theme. Um, we're having a promotion that week. You know, obviously, this, you know, to celebrate, um turn to your social media, maybe do a few postings about uh libraries that we can. Use the proper hashtag, I don't know what it is, but I'm sure there's something else, I'll share more. Uh, we started working on the action plan um for, that starts July first. Um, we're meeting on Wednesday, uh having our second meeting about that. So uh. You know, it's uh. It's been interesting conversation, talk about how to review the work that's in flight. You know, there was the sense that we've we've learned a lot. And there was a feeling that we haven't kind of digested what we've learned in order now to start writing new. And so there was kind of a way to how do we, how do you work through that? Like, how do you incorporate that into year two? You know, it's just not by osmosis that it all kind of comes into us, so I said, well. We did like most of the verbs in the first year were identify, build, you know, understand, things like that. I said, now it's implement or, you know, expand or, you know, use or try, like, so I think that's. They're they're getting there now to start and say, it's, you can, part of the work is going to be to take that stuff now and do something with it. And so there was a little, the room got a little calm, so.
It's a good buying.
Yes.
Is it hesitant with hesitation or is it with enthusiasm?
Um, I think it's with inevitability. Uh, no, I think that um. I, I think the concern by the staff is that. I keep saying that this is the work we need to be doing. And they keep saying, but we have all the work we are doing, right? So I keep saying, well, that's great, but this is the work we need to be, so it's like, you gotta, I keep trying to let go of things that are less important. And that's, this is the tension that they're, that the staff is having. So, I'm like, but this is where we need to be, not what was, well, what about? We have all this other people, who who's doing what, you know, so it's it's always gets back to that balancing act between. Them shedding some things in order to do what is needing to be done as opposed to what was done.
It's especially tough to let, for people to let go of stuff that they're doing very well. They feel comfortable, they feel accomplished doing that, and to say, we don't need to do that any longer, it's it's tough for people.
That's right, that's right, so I think that um. You know, the the if if we keep with the plan that we had for this next budget year, which is a few promotions. I think we, I possibly will be thinking through what everyone's up to. You know, there might be a little bit of shifting around of that in order to help with that too. It might be good time for some new eyes on some different topics.
But I think the strategic plan at least gave the vision as to what, where the library is going, and we can see the changes already because the community is coming together. Mega events going on. And a lot of people come up and tell me, wow, this events are beautiful, they know, they're having a good time.
Good.
So I think we are doing good, I I personally feel, and the strategic plan thinking kind of helped with that, I think, right?
Yes.
You know, to come up with this, some ideas, a little bit of new thinking maybe.
Yeah, thank you. So. Trying to push forward. We are preparing for our summer reading, you know, which is obviously our big time, uh the theme is gonna be summer road trip. So um, so we're excited by that, uh there's gonna be a gift shop. You know, when you're on your road trip, you always go to the gift shop in order to get your your stuff, so that'll be where the, like, the prizes are or the weekly events. And um we're still working out some of the details, which should be a lot of fun. So uh we're excited uh by it. But uh yeah, one of the things you're gonna do is a pizza party for the class that has the most signups, so we're gonna try to get the the schools involved. To try to help push that, so at the end of the summer, you know, there's a little bit of that tie-in to kind of bridge them or across, that there's a partnership there. A little bit more. And uh, and that could build a little bit as well with the teachers, so we're thinking maybe at the superintendent days. Uh, before the school year started, maybe we present that teacher with something. You know, do they let us in and make a presentation at an assembly of the teachers and say, hey, you know, this is Smith. Here you go, this is the live, you know, the big pizza pie or something, and you get the pizza pie award, and maybe that builds a little bit of competition, you know, there. I don't know if that would work on.
Teachers always like to be recognized for their hard work especially, so, alright, so.
I was thinking about one idea, and I don't know whether that works. Um, I think a lot of businesses are looking for more teenagers to work for them. Right, so even my, I'm looking for somebody like, you know, who would be interested for interview in the summer. And it's very hard to kind of find, like, you know, good students or. Even the businesses, I hear a lot of businesses say, oh, we are looking for people, we can't find them, where the where the kids are. I don't know whether, at some point, I don't know whether, how long an effort or how much effort it is, but there's so many businesses in in Papua. If they can give us the list of stuff and we have so many students that really want the jobs. If somehow we can make library also that kind of a center.
Job board kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, which is like, you know, really uh the need, because a lot of businesses in Papua also, I think they're always looking for interns. To do a lot of small small chores.
There are one point nine jobs for every.
That's right.
Yes, definitely.
Plus, and that's where people are not finding, but there are a lot of students who don't know where to go.
I have to answer that, no, I don't wanna go back in the classroom.
Do you, you don't think the schools uh that's natural that it would go through the school or the?
Guidance councils do that kind of stuff.
Yeah, they they are, I know that they do it, and I I I'm sure they are kind of trying, going that route. But I don't know how many business really go to the school in order to say, hey, we have vacancy and, you know, if you want students, can you? I don't know whether they do that, and even if it's not just like we're talking about library as a community. Not necessarily high schoolers, it can be students who are coming back home, you know, who don't have jobs.
What about recent retirees?
I'm always looking for women who are like, you know, in their forty-fives, forties, and the kids are gone back and they've stayed home with the kids. And now they don't know what to do with their time. You know, so I kind of look out, look out for those women, I'm always trying to find them.
So you know that we've relaunched the buzz, right, the hot dog buzz? And we share, we share job listings all the time there.
Okay.
So if it's it's on Facebook or it's a website, you know, send it to us and we'll put it up on there.
Okay, for myself, but okay, I'm just.
I'm just saying for any business.
So so that is something people should know, that on the bus, this is available.
That's right, so we do.
Community needs to know, they need to go on the bus if they're looking for.
Right.
Especially the students.
That's right, right, so um, you know, like, let's say the Hop Hog, the one-stop center is having an event, we'll we'll make sure that people know that or. If there's a local hiring fair, we'll put that up there, you know, so we share a lot of job information through. Through our social media channels um to try to spread the word.
Okay, how much traffic do you see going?
It's all, like, again, we're restarting it. Um, but the idea though is that there is an avenue that we are sharing it, so. You know, question one is, can we share?
Or promoting, promoting the buzz then?
Sure. But I think we have an answer to the question, might not be very effective right now because of the audience is small, but we are trying to push it through a channel, right? Yeah, yeah. So you just have to send it to us or say, hey, can this get on, sure, we can put it up there. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Because I do a job posting in our weekly bulletin in the church.
For the church, okay, alright, I'll do that, absolutely, thank you.
So uh just we had the carpet install, I hope you saw the new carpet. Uh, outside, didn't even notice it. So it did its job, which meant it looked like it was always here. Um, so that went really well, I I couldn't be happier with the staff's performance while I was away, it 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 all went like clockwork, which is amazing for like. You know, basically, three contractors to come back twice, so, and they all did what they said they were gonna do, so that worked out for me. Um, and it's great, so very happy with what happened. Uh, last week, we had a meeting with Dan and Cindy Simon from uh Signwave. To talk about outdoor signage options. Uh, I thought it went well, it was definitely kind of a conceptual meeting. Obviously, the problem, or you know, the the issue that we're having, problem statement, is that the visibility of our space in this. Location is limited, uh we hear complaints that people don't know where the library is. And then even when they're here, they're not sure quite what door to go with, um it's kind of a complicated building. Um, it's not a civic space, there's not a grand entrance. Um, while the awning helps, we had limitations due to uh. A covenant on the property about what kind of signage we can add to the building. So Dan um and Cindy have done the research to find out what those limitations are. And a process forward of how to improve it. So um thanks to John and Julie, and you guys are both on the call. Uh, it sounds as though we, you know, we gave them some direction, we said, asked some questions about some things, where could it go, what can we do? And it, and they'll come back to us with some proposals as a place to start.
Matt, would the landlord allow us to put a sign on top of the monument sign that's on the corner that says Crossroads North?
I don't know.
You know, just like an additional, what what do you call it, a pole and?
Oh, it was a panel. Which is the one that Ralph Junior made.
Yeah, yeah, but put that on top of the Crossroads North, just say library. Um, cause that's visible, right? I mean, that's the first thing you see when you drive past the uh the Spartan Drive entrance.
Right. So I think to me, where I where I see the issues are, is that it's a, it's a long building, right? Along a very, what can be a fast road, right? So you really have the entrance, you have two entrances, right? Plus you have the the entrance, really three entrances, when you think about it, and then once you get here, identifying the entrance here. So it's like a lot to figure out.
Especially if you're not coming in.
Right, yeah. So, we had the signs put in by the the state. You know, the state DOT put up the, you know, kind of the generic library symbol signs, so at least you know it's nearby.
Right.
Which helps. But that true kind of monument, here we are. So at this point, John, we don't, we didn't say anything to the.
Right.
To the landlord's sides, we're looking into this. They're aware of that, they're and and they're like, you know, okay, great, let us know what we need to do. But I haven't asked them one thing or anything until we're kind of in agreement, as as Dan said. We wanna be really, feel really strong about what we're gonna do, so we should be going through a reams of paper. And iteration until we get to what we think is gonna work. And then we go, we start to get permissions and approvals, because otherwise. I don't wanna waste their time with them, because their processes is slow. It takes a long time for them to get through their legal department, because it's not a priority to them. Uh, and then they're gonna have to sign applications, and it, all they view it as is their time, and they're not getting compensated for it. So um I I wanna make sure that when we go to them, it's, you know, we're we're, this is what we wanna do. You know, and then be prepared for their, their input, which typically has been minimal. Usually have been very good about what we want, they're not, as long as we're paying for it, they're like, that's fine, no problem. And you're willing to take it down when you leave, right? I mean, those are really the good questions, so.
I don't know whether roof, are you allowed to use a roof, does that belong, or there also we need permission?
All of it.
All across the roof.
Really, even the sign we put up um where it says library, on that that facing sign. We supposedly, according to Dan in the town, we did not get permission for that. I I have permission for that sign, whether it was the right permission, someone at the town said, go ahead. And of course, I put it, I wouldn't put up a sign that they were like, what are you doing? Um, but I guess I didn't go through the proper, whatever, so um. It's really these buildings were supposed to have very limited signage, but they never expected this use. You know, they expected what the use is, which is these little offices with something on the, you know, a decal on the door, and that was it. That was the most identification anyone, and just so the mailman knew where to go, you know, more than. More than a whole community trying to get into a civic space. So we are weird, like, we're a weird use for this kind of building. Um, and his point is the town should respond in light, you know, if you're. If you have this new use and you had this covenant where no one expected it, you know, we need to advocate for that.
Yeah, we saw lots of good examples, he showed us examples from all over, libraries all over and uh. There's a lot, a lot of variety and a lot of interesting things, so.
Nowadays, there's a lot of things that printing and everything.
Yeah.
And that's why I know there is no lighting in the front, because the space was not meant to be used at nighttime and, you know.
Yeah, right.
Just people going up and down.
So for the lighting question, which uh you know, you've mentioned a few times, uh. I've I've put it to them and I'm just waiting to hear back, but I'll follow up. So, cause that's definitely much more than I don't.
For them, it's more than enough, because they were not hoping this.
Right, yeah, yeah, of course, so. Uh, and that is my report. Thank you, Matt.
Uh, committee reports, any committee reports? Okay, old business? No? New business? Uh, adopting uh a resolution to authorize written procedures governing the video conferencing by board members? We discussed it earlier in our air hearing. Is there a uh? Motion to push, uh adopt the policy, the the.
So moves.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh. Period for public participation?
Well, then you have the procedures themselves.
Oh, they have to adopt the procedures themselves?
Yeah, I think that would be wise.
So. The procedure is given. Where, what page is it on that?
Sure, let me just uh, let me scroll up there. So.
Model procedure for?
I have page ten.
Yeah.
I think it's page ten and eleven.
Yes.
Forty-nine and ten.
Ten, ten and eleven.
Ten, eleven.
So we, I don't know if you have a chance to read it, but uh I I did glance through it earlier. This is extraordinary circumstances, including.
Is that including vacations?
Uh, if there's something sprung up on you, maybe. Yeah, you know, it's uh. I think it was really for instances where people.
Emergencies.
Emergency, they can't be there or sick or whatever, you know, still would like to participate in the meeting. Yes, so uh, motion to adopt this policy as written on page ten and eleven? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is our period for public participation.
I saw a notice in the paper about some of that. Yeah, I had to ask my wife, first of all. And then I remember coming by, but you're right, there's dividing the length of the corner. That's the spot, and I understand there's some confusion maybe when people, but you need to get them into the parking, plus they're in the parking lot. The note of turn at that corner and come in.
Yeah.
That that's the first. I would think you're a very good tenant. Because, you know, the offices are closing and trying to reduce their rental space and so forth, but. This is a great tenant, you're you're here, you pay your bills, I'm sure you're not about to, you know, cut your space and have. I would think they would buy them some accommodation.
And in fact, uh, last year or year before, the the space came open on the back side of the building, and they wanted us to ask if we weren't to stand for that space. So they know we're gonna be here so long.
Yeah, yeah, this is the idea, if you're a landlord in a commercial building, I would think to get the, the wealth of public library. So, anyway, it's certainly worth pursuing, but I think that one sign location that you like.
Yes, especially one that could be lit at night, because the problem is the signs are not visible, well, we have, it's a. Nice sign, but you can't see it at night.
Right, we need to add a light to that, yeah.
That was Eagle Park, yeah.
Okay, uh, so if there's no other other participation, um, uh, personal report, any personal reports there?
There was a personal report, there was one action on it, um.
Yeah.
So, just need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Any questions?
Any questions about the uh personal report? It's on page. Yeah. There it is. Yes, appoint uh Joyce Shapiro as library clerk, part-time. Effective uh, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. So. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, okay, so any general discussion, any general discussion? Nope, no. An executive session, maybe, an executive session?
Nope.
So, uh, uh, looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So.
Second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so the meeting ended at eight. Uh, eleven. I'm gonna be so impressed.